attendees joining us for some of our cases.
Hey, do you have any idea what these AI media captioner and closed captioner one captioner are on the attendees?
Since we're streaming tonight, we always have to caption anything that we put out live, so they're here to caption the meeting.
Okay, alright, thank you. It's like it's about that time. You ready to go for us?
Yeah, it just turned five o'clock. We're right on time.
Okay, well, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our October 2020 Planning Commission Meeting, which I now call to order. Uh, so please, um, I guess most, everybody should have their microphones muted if you don't mind. Uh, Amber, can you please call roll?
Okay, Wendy Birmingham.
Here.
Robin Bridges.
Here.
Phil Chancellor.
Here.
Hannah Jager.
Here.
Mac Lazzanby.
Here.
Marcus Marshall.
Here.
Warren McCord.
Here.
Nonette Reese.
Here.
Bob Wrightenbaugh.
Here.
Alright, before we get started, uh, it looks like we've got a number of attendees with us tonight, so I just want to kind of go over a few of the ground rules and what we're here for. Um, so the basic process tonight is that the commission will be presented with agenda items by the city planning department. And a representative for the agenda item will also have an opportunity to make comments or answer specific questions. Uh, once that that's over, we will, this is for each item we're, what I'm talking about that we have before us. Um, then I'll open a public hearing as appropriate, uh, because some things require a public hearing and some of them do not. And this will be the opportunity for, uh, anybody that would like to say something about the item, uh, at hand. Uh, they could get up and talk for five minutes on the issue. Uh, what we ask is that you keep your comments relevant to that particular case at hand. And, um, especially it, it appears since we've had a lot of input on a, a couple of these items tonight. Uh, if we do have people speaking, um, please try to keep the, uh, the discussion, repetition of the discussion and the points to make. Um, if you can kind of keep that to a dull roar, you know, people saying the same thing over and over again. We understand what's going on. We can hear every single person that talks and we'll get the message very quickly, uh, as, as people, uh, have this hearing. Um, come forward and speak. Uh, once the public hearing is closed, after everybody's had their time to talk, uh, I'll close the public hearing. And then the, uh, representative and staff will have an opportunity to answer any of the questions that were brought up in the hearing. Uh, then I will open the floor for a, uh, motion and we'll, we'll vote on the item. The, the commission will vote based on state and local laws, the city's comprehensive plan 2030 and the basic good of the community. Now, having summarized that, I also want to kind of talk a little bit about our role when it comes to subdivisions and subdivision plats. Uh, we do have a number of those tonight. And, um, so I'd like to summarize the role and responsibility, uh, for those. By Alabama statute, a municipal planning commission such as ours is the final approval authority for subdivision plats. With regards to the plats, the commission acts as an administrative body and is bound by the limitations contained in the state laws, the zoning ordinance and the subdivision regulations that this commission has previously adopted. While the public hearings are required for each of these, each plat, uh, the preliminary plats in particular, um, we, and we welcome all public comments, please have to understand that this commission's authority is strictly limited to confirming that the plats meet or exceed specific requirements codified in laws, regulate, and the regulations that we previously described. Okay, so, um, and then, you know, as part of the Zoom process, the, the way that, that works is, um, the attendees that would like to speak, uh, and when the time comes to speak, what I will ask you to do is you, you, you have an ability to raise your electronic hand, uh, and when I see your hand raised, I will take you by, you know, I'll watch as people try to do that, uh, try to raise their hand and then I will, uh, open your mic so that you can speak. Okay, so the first order of business that we have tonight is citizens communication. And this is a time when anybody can speak basically on anything they want to speak about that is not on the regular agenda tonight. And also, if you have something that you might want to say about something that is on the consent agenda, and then we have about, uh, seven or eight items on the consent agenda. So at this time, I'll ask, uh, if anybody would like to speak on anything on the consent agenda or something else that is not on the regular agenda. Okay, I'm seeing nobody raising their hands, so we'll go ahead and move on. There is no old business tonight. So I'm gonna move into the, um, the consent agenda. Now, the consent agenda tonight, uh, consists of the, uh, the packet, the approval of packet meeting minutes for the September ninth packet meeting and the regular meeting on September, December, excuse me, September the 10th. And then we also have a number of items, uh, the first one is Owens Crossing Final Plat, PL 2020 00536. The second item is Yarborough Farms Subdivision, The Park, PL 2020 00491. The third is Summerlin Plat Number Two, PL 2020 001518. Then there's Sanford Commercial Subdivision, PL 2020 00524. The fifth is Sanford, uh, Commercial Subdivision, PL 2020 00525. And then finally, uh, Donahue Ridge Phase Three, PL 2020 00550. Any comments from staff?
Uh, no, sir, just a reminder for the audience, more than for the commission members, that all of these items were reviewed and presented to you at your Monday packet meeting. But, uh, I certainly stand ready to answer any questions you might have tonight if, if, uh, if there are any outstanding questions.
Okay. So that moves me to ask for the, the commission to, um, any questions or a motion.
I move to approve the six items on the consent agenda, including the finish the packet meeting September the ninth and the regular meeting of September the 10th.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say no? Okay, motion carries. Moving on to new business, uh, the first item for new business is, um, park rezoning, which is PL 2020 00508, which is a recommendation for rezoning. Staff recommends denial.
Mr. Howell. The case for you is a rezoning request for approximately 0.46 acres and on off of, uh, Blood College Street at 904 North College Street at the intersection of Shelton Mill Road. It's zoned NC 18 and requests to rezone it to redevelopment district. As you can tell, there's a lot of NC around it. There's surrounded by NC 18, NC 6 next to it and DDH nearby. The nearest section of redevelopment district is south of it, at the, just south of the intersection of Los Angeles Avenue and North College Street. The property itself currently is used as a single family home and it has an accessory dwelling unit in the back. Future land use designation for this lot is neighborhood preservation, which, uh, which identifies that any kind of land that's designated as such should remain as a stable existing neighborhood to maintain its existing densities and housing types. The requested, the request to reschedule to RDD would allow for a maximum of 16 dwelling units an acre for a foreign subdivision. And at this location at that size, that will equal out to, uh, seven units of foreign subdivision. Occupancy in the, in the, um, RDB is allows up to five unrelated occupants. Whereas the neighborhood conservation district that it is currently only allows no more than two unrelated occupants. The the current use and the accessory dwelling unit make it for, uh, make the, I, you know, the building, the possibilities of redeveloping this particular lot limited, especially in a neighborhood conservation zone. The fact that they want the applicant to do his own line and speak more to it. The applicant desires to maintain the accessory dwelling unit or replace this single family structure with a two-unit duplex style. However, only single family homes are allowed to have an accessory dwelling unit. And so you can in fact create, uh, parcel with three different units making it a multifamily development at that location. Staff does recommend denial of this proposal, in fact, based on its non-compliance with the future land use plan and its incompatibility with the, we, we use incompatibility of the area around it, which is completely surrounded by other single family homes. That about sums it up. Uh, any of your questions? Or I will say, I think we have to, I will say that we received quite a bit of communication, uh, from the neighborhood that is all in, uh, all in opposition.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Howell. Uh, I do notice, uh, in the, in attendance is Robert Park, who is the applicant. Uh, I assume that's the same Robert Park that's, is the applicant. And, uh, you have, uh, I'll open the floor to you if you would like to have, uh, have a say there, Mr. Park. Your microphone is on.
We're here.
Well, I'm I'm just trying to, uh, see what I can do with the property. The house is falling down around itself. It's got a lot of dry rot, water damage. And I'm just trying to, uh, get it rezoned where I can build something there that will, uh, support the mortgage. I still have a, uh, mortgage on the property that would have to be rolled into another, uh, mortgage. And single family, I can't get enough rent out of it to, uh, support the mortgage. So I was just trying to get it redone so we could do a duplex. And if it make any difference, we can design a duplex where it looks like a single family house.
Okay. Is that all?
That's all.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, I am now gonna, this does require a public hearing, so I will go ahead and open the public hearing. And anybody that would like to speak, please raise your hand and I'll activate your microphone. Okay, I'm seeing a number, a number of them pop up. Ms. Wanda Prather. Alls you need to do is unmute your microphone and you can speak, Ms. Prather, and then I'll get Brian Moore next.
Hi, um, thank you for this opportunity. I, uh, my mother has the, um, the property directly across Shelton Road, and really all I have is a question here. I didn't see anything in the packet that says what this proposed duplex would look like. Is there anything available for that yet?
No, there's, there's not. Right now, as we're considering is a rezoning, uh, and that doesn't really cover any kind of, you know, there's no design associated with that at all. And so we're just looking to rezone from, uh, in a neighborhood conservation to an RDD.
Okay, well, then I would, uh, my mother lives there. I have her power of attorney and I would have to say that there has been so much, uh, with the meaning of Shelton Road and then the, to support the sidewalk and the, the cutting off of College Street, um, there, it has moved the traffic so much closer to the house that I am concerned about adding a lot more traffic on that corner than there is now, so I am concerned about, anyway, I would have to say I'm opposed to the rezoning for a dup- duplex unless I can see where, how the traffic, additional traffic is going to be accounted for. Um, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Uh, Mr. Moore, go ahead and, um, unmute your mic and you can speak.
Yes, good afternoon, uh, Brian Moore. I live at 862 North Carey Drive. Been there for about 11 years and I've lived in that neighborhood within a quarter mile of that subject property for the past 31 years. And that property is located about, uh, 430 feet from, uh, my lot line to its lot line. And, uh, as you know, the, the difference between, uh, NC and RDD, uh, i- is supposed to preserve the character of the neighborhood. And the, uh, RDD is supposed to be, uh, according to the definition in the zoning ordinance, says to promote renew- renewal of those transitional areas that have undergone extensive changes in land use type, uh, density and intensity. Now, the Carey Woods, uh, neighborhood there is, uh, a, a, an old school neighborhood, been there for over a half a century. Pretty stable neighborhood and not a lot of, not a lot of transition in the type of land use in that area. Now, you can get like a less than a half a mile away, there is a lot of transition to the collegiate style housing. And RDD allows you to have up to five unrelated people living together. Now, this property, just by observation over the years, uh, it seems to have been used as a rental property and mostly occupied by college students already, uh, over the years in spite of the fact that it was, uh, zoned NC. Now, this, uh, new development, a couple of intersections over down at the corner of Gay and Drake called, uh, 30 Drake. Uh, they replaced, uh, some 1940s era homes there with four brand new beautiful, they are beautiful houses there. Uh, college style cottages, I'm gonna call them. But, uh, they've been occupied for less than two months. First week of August, now that the first week of October, it's two months. And I'm a bit of a night owl coming home from my business and I see a lot of what goes on. And three out of those four units have, uh, been host to, uh, what I describe as a spectacularly large collegiate style drinking party. Now, diagonally across from that, the old 1860 home, uh, at the corner of Drake and Gay. Uh, it is zoned RDD, but yet that home is also a frequent host to these sensationally sized collegiate style drinking parties. Yeah, I just chuckling right on by and say I'm glad that's not in my neighborhood. Now, if we were to, uh, take away the NC zoning and allow this to be RDD, then that would open up this type of activities in our neighborhood. The other point I want to make is that property, the subject property is faced by College Street and sided by Shelton Mill Road. And the crossing guard works that area twice a day. And it's a, a primary travel path for, uh, the elementary students walking to and from the Carey Woods School. And for those reasons, I would concur with the city planner, uh, that denial of the rezoning be the proper action. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, okay, I am not seeing anyone else and what I would, uh, I'll, uh, Mr. Park, you, as long as we're, uh, discussing this, if you have something else that you might want to say since you're the applicant, please raise your hand and we'll, uh, I'll recognize you. But we're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing now. And then, uh, look for, uh, comments, questions, discussion from the from the commission. Yeah, I've got Mr. Park would like to say something real quick again. Let me, uh, turn on his microphone. Go ahead, go ahead and unmute. There you go.
I had to go through this process to decide what I'm gonna do with the property, so I guess we just try to either sell the property as it is or demolish the house and sell the property as it is then, or demolish the house and rebuild, uh, same, a single family house. But I had to go through this process in order to.
Get, get the call, okay?
Yep.
Okay. Right, is that it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, let's see, bear with me a minute. Okay, so I'm, still have it open for the commission. Go ahead and, uh, any comments, questions, motion?
I can make a motion.
Okay.
Oh, I move that the, uh, petition for rezoning be denied.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion?
Actually, we'll say it's, it, I just don't like the idea of, of taking this particular lot, singling it out and, and changing it in the middle of the rest of the NC. That's that's really where I fall, so I, I actually, I do agree with the denial.
Okay. Any further? Okay, I have a motion in a second. Amber, can you give us a roll call vote on this?
Robin?
Yes.
Uh, yes. Chancellor?
Yes.
Jager?
Yes.
Lazzanby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Cord?
Oh, yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wrightenbaugh?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Alright, motion carries and the rezoning is denied. Okay, item number six, this is Men's Trail, uh, 11th addition, PL 2020 519, which, and this is a preliminary plat for performance residential development. Ms. Robinson?
Yes, this is a request from Harris Doyle Homes for, um, preliminary plat approval for 55 lots in Men's Trail for performance residential, single family addition of the subdivision. Uh, there will be 54 residential lots and one open space lot. It's located in the very back of the development. Um, and they've just got a few more phases to go before completing, um, the subdivision. The, this area is located off of Men's Trail Road and Rattlin Road. And this lot here is the open space and these are the single family lots. Uh, for this phase, they are required a maximum density of 7.5 dwelling units an acre. And they have provided, uh, under three, 2.94 dwelling units. And they are also required 20% open space and have provided just over that, 23%. Um, this is a little different from the master development plan in that, kind of hard to see here. Let me get it here and see. So in change nine here, originally it was supposed to go behind the mansion and loop around. And there's been a little bit cha- of, of change with ownership of the mansion, so they have decided to not connect that road and leave this buffer around the mansion. So now these two sections do not connect. But other than that, um, it is the same. This, there are two roads that lead back out to the main spine road. And we do recommend approval with staff comments. I did get a few calls on this and I believe a couple of the adjoining property amateurs are at the meeting this evening that may want to speak. And I believe one individual was in opposition of this phase.
Uh, is the applicant here today?
Brett Bastin is their representative.
Okay, Brett, uh, I've opened your mic, so you just.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm on. I'll be able to answer any questions.
Okay, good. Alright, thank you. Um, alright, well, this requires a public hearing, so I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. If you'd like to speak, please raise your electronic hand and, and I'll, uh, turn on your microphone. Alright, it looks like I'm seeing no one. So I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and ask for questions, comments, or a motion from the commission.
Me turn, I move to approve with, with staff comments. A second then.
Okay, I've got a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, go ahead, uh, Amber, if you give us another roll call, please.
Okay, Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jager?
Yes.
Lazzanby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wrightenbaugh?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Uh, on to number nine, which is the Cotswolds Phase Three, PL 2020 00521. Another preliminary plat, Ms. Kennedy.
Yeah, it could be me. Uh, this case is a revised preliminary plat from Barrett Simpson and the Cotswold subdivision. The area in question is, um, DDH. This preliminary plat is for 103 lot conventional subdivision. The original submitted preliminary plat was for an 88 lot performance residential subdivision uh, that was approved by Planning Commission last August. Um, so the primary change is the number of lots added, um, which is mainly in the southern portion here. Uh, it is conventional, so they aren't required any open space, but they are providing a significant amount due to the wetlands of the area. And then here's the area where you'll see it's still undeveloped and at the southwest portion of the Cotswold subdivision. I did receive, uh, one phone call from the HOA president of Cotswold just asking for the information to register for this line. Um, so that may be on this evening to discuss, and Mike Rice with Barrett Simpson is on, um, to answer any more questions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Rice? Anything to say?
Yes, actually I do.
Okay.
And I, I apologize. Um, Stephanie kind of caught me off guard there for a moment with the, uh, conventional subdivision. And being in a Zoom meeting, I'm at my desk and was able to pull up our application and just realized that, um, our application had a mistake on it. This is for, this was supposed to be a, for a performance, um, residential subdivision. The, the open space, um, obviously clearly meets the, the 30% requirements. Um, if I, if I could ask, uh, Ms. Kennedy or Mr. Cotton to, um, let me know if that can be adjust, that request can be adjusted during the meeting.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see why not. There's nothing substantive that changes about the plat that's been represented to the public, so.
So it'd be just, it would be like, make some administrative changes to the, uh, packet?
I, I think it's just what we'll do is we'll just make, we'll just clarify, what we're just clarifying for the record, that it is a performance subdivision. When it comes back in for final plat, it will be reflected as a performance subdivision, but Mr. Rice is correct. I have no question that he needs the requirements for a performance subdivision.
Okay, will that require us to adjust any kind of motion that we might want to have?
I think you may just want to clarify as part of the motion that this is in fact a, this is in fact a performance subdivision.
Okay.
Nothing about the way it's been represented is affected in any way.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, is that it? Uh, Mr. Rice?
Yes, thank you.
Alright. Okay, this does, uh, require a public hearing, so I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anybody that is, uh, attending that would like to speak? I see one hand up, uh, Randall Stoves. Go ahead and unmute your mic and then I'll get Ms. Fetch next.
Yes, uh, this is, uh, Randall Stoves, uh, residence of the Cotswold. Um, my concern, uh, in the neighborhood, I know that this was, this plat was originally approved back in August of 2019. Um, and was done so with a recommendation of a traffic study to be done for the area. Um, as a resident within the, uh, the Richland Road area, I think you're all aware, uh, well aware of the, the traffic issues we have coming in and out of that neighborhood. And I've seen a lot of, uh, of promises about the, uh, potential of, uh, connecting this and to some future outer loop. Um, and, and other things that would help address the, uh, the traffic problems for our neighborhood. Uh, but, uh, I, I do know, again, this was approved, uh, back a year, uh, 14 months ago. And I think, uh, there was talk of, uh, of completing a traffic study. And, uh, in reading up on this, it seemed the traffic study still had not been completed. And yet we're expanding to more lots and that is a concern for me from being part of the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, we'll, we'll address that when we close the public hearing. Thank you very much. Um. So Ms. Fetch, um, okay, you're, you're on.
Uh, my concern is also traffic related, but also I want to take into account the traffic going through Willow Creek because a lot of the school traffic, because Richland Road gets so backed up that a lot of the traffic goes out through Willow Creek neighborhood. So I would like the traffic study to include Willow Creek Road as well.
Okay. We'll, we'll address that too.
Thank you, that's all.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, let's see, uh, Bill Combs, just unmute your microphone and you can speak.
Can you hear me okay?
You loud and clear?
Okay, I just want to reiterate what the others had said when, uh, I was at the other public meeting back 12, 14 months ago and, uh. Basically, there's just going to be two ways out of there. Once again, we, we're still all aware of the, uh, Richland Road, uh, traffic situation, but then if you go out on Willow Creek or, uh, down Deer Run Road, I mean, that's, that's nothing more. It's. It's just barely a single lane road going out there to 14, so I would like to see something additional with the traffic study before, uh, before we keep, uh, just adding more houses. You have this area here with 103 units and then we're still building over in the east Richland area, which is gonna, uh. I just, uh, wish we'd go forward with that bypass that's supposed to be around back there before we allow too much more development in this areas. That's about all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay. Anybody else? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. And I guess, uh, I'm not sure if Allison's back at work yet. Um, is there?
Dan, Dan Crowe is on the line. Allison won't be back with us until Monday.
Okay, uh, hey, so Dan, how, can you, uh, address, there's two things. One has to do with, you know, what's the status of the traffic study and specifically, um, are we including, uh, Willow Creek in that study? And I, I would probably suggest we are also talking about the, uh, the last gentleman that spoke mentioned that kind of a small, almost one lane road. Are all these different, uh, the, the current existing, you know, entrances and exits to this area being considered in the traffic study? And then when is this traffic study going to be done? That's one, kind of one question. And then, uh, what's the latest on the outer loop? I know it's still kind of out there, but what do you know?
Well, the last one first, the, um, there is a, a, a study ongoing right now, um, on the outer loop feasibility study and it's, it's just, uh, looking at the proposed alignment in more detail. Some sections are, are more nailed down, so to speak, than others in terms of, uh, you know, what's, what's the most, uh, likely configuration of the route, um, in terms of topography and, and land ownership and things like that. Um, so that, that is underway. Um, it's, I, I don't, off the top of my head, have a, have a schedule for when they expect to be completed, but, um, you know, I think it will be within six months from, on vague recollection of last time we talked about the timeframe. Um.
What does that, does that, what does that translate? I mean, again, I don't want anything, I'm not trying to nail you down on these real specifics, but in general, what, what does that translate into? How much time is it going to take to kind of get started moving it some kind of dirt? I mean, we out a couple of years on that still or?
Uh, yes, definitely. Um, my, my understanding, this is, this is more of a, a broad picture analysis of the alignment in general. Um, there's no, there's no funding, uh, yet for doing any portion of the, of the road in terms of actually building it. Um. So, uh, that, that remains to be determined, uh, as far as how long it'll be until construction of something would happen.
Okay.
Um.
The traffic study.
Traffic study was actually, um, submitted, the preliminary traffic study was submitted after the last, um, plat went through. Uh, we, uh, looked at it and sent some feedback, uh, to them at the time. Um, I, I guess the project may have gotten shelved temporarily or whatever while they were looking at things and making some changes, so uh, we had not received a revised, um, study after that, but, you know, it, it has been, it is in the preliminary review process, even though it's been, you know, six, seven months or so since we received it. Um, as far as the intersections, I mean, the, the scope does cover, uh, these areas of concern that I'm hearing about, um.
Like Willow Creek in particular?
Uh, yes, Willow Creek. Um, Martin Luther King Drive and Willow Creek is one of the intersections that have been looked at. Uh, Richland Road and Cotswolds Way, uh, Richland Road and Yarborough Farms Boulevard and Shugdewen Parkway and Richland Road. So those are four of the major intersections where they're doing, you know, the more detailed level of service analysis on all the movements, uh, at those intersections. So. Um. Was there? Anything else specific that I?
No, I think you covered everything. I think that, that sounds good. Okay, so back over to the, um, uh, commission for, uh, comments, questions, motion?
I have a couple of questions and I'm, so I'm understanding, because I do remember very specifically that we asked, when we approved this preliminary plat back in August, we asked specifically for Willow Creek to be included, um, just because of the nature of the connectivity through that neighborhood. Um, and so I'm under, I guess I'm understanding that that was included in that study. Um, and then two, I, I am curious about the, the, just the number of increase in the number of lots. What is driving that? Um, since we had originally approved this, it, I think 80 something lots. Just curious to hear. That explanation.
Yeah, can you help us there, Mr. Rice?
Uh, absolutely. Um, the developer of this property, um, was looking at a development here and after further discussion and talking to builders and pretty much looking at everything, it was a, uh, it was a, a bit of a product line change based on the topography. Um, and so you, you actually ended up, uh, taking some of the lots based on the topography, which is significant up there. And, um, making the road frontage of the lot smaller to better account for the change um, in grade going up this fairly steep hill and it resulted in, um, more lots.
Okay, thank you. Do we have the, the old preliminary plat that we can look at and maybe see them side by side, or is that something that's just not part of this? Presentation?
We don't have that in the current presentation, no ma'am.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, Phil, my, I can't find my, raise my hand button.
Go ahead.
If I may ask a question of Dan regarding the traffic study. Uh, if the traffic study, if we go ahead and approve the, the subdivision tonight of the preliminary plat, will that study be completed and whom will be responsible for any, any mitigation measures that may, uh, be determined by that traffic study? Will that be done at the DRT or what?
Uh, it'll definitely be done, um, with or prior to, uh, the DRT process and, and final approval.
In other words, so for the people that were concerned about the traffic and, and wanting the traffic study, the traffic study will be done and if there are, uh, measures that must be addressed to make, uh, uh, to mitigate any deterioration that this, th- these added, uh, residences will cause, then that will be taken care of then, by this developer or by who?
Yes, by the developer, that's correct.
Hey, do we have a motion?
Chairman?
Go ahead.
Hi, uh. I think by mandate or law, if it meets the minimum requirements or better, the commission has to overall approve it.
Right.
But it doesn't say that I specifically have to vote for it and I'm just have been concerned about really the condition of Richland Road and I'm at a point that I think it may be wise for the commission, certainly not tonight, but in the near future, maybe considering a moratorium from just adding more and more houses onto this bottleneck until somebody or the city can come to some more conclusive relief date. It's just piling on, uh, but I think we have to approve it, uh, by mandate or law, so I'm not in favor of it and I really have appetite for the people to live out there morning and evening trying to get away and back to their own.
Is, is there a way for us to? I guess, are, were, was there a new traffic study with 103 lots required? I don't think I got that answered. Was there a new traffic study requested at all from the city?
I think it's an update, right, Dan?
Recent discussions, um, have not been had yet about the, uh, status of the traffic study, but you know, we certainly are going to look at the trip generation and, you know, it's obviously if there's more lots, it's going to generate more trips and those will need to be run back through their analysis and, and, you know, if it reflects any downgrades to any levels of service at any intersections or, or streets, then, then that'll be updated as well and it could possibly change the recommendations that they've got in the preliminary report.
Yeah, so it's not final yet, right, traffic study?
No, it's not.
Okay.
Ready for a motion?
Ready for a motion?
I move that, uh, PL 2020 521 Cotswolds Phase Three, uh, revised preliminary plat for a performance subdivision be approved.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion on the motion?
With all staff comments.
I'm sorry. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, all, all staff comments, yes.
Okay. Amber, can you do a roll call, please?
Yes, Bridget?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazzanby?
No.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Wright and Ball?
Yes. Yes.
You do sign, sign language.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. All right, on to number 11, the Hearn subdivision. Uh, we have a preliminary and a final plat here tonight. Uh, the first one is the preliminary plat, which is 2020 00522 and it's for a conventional subdivision. Mr. Kip?
Good evening, commissioners. This is a preliminary plat request for a, a six lot conventional subdivision. Um, that is within the planning jurisdiction, but outside of the optimal boundary and outside of the city limits. Uh, it is southeast of the, uh, kindergarten high school and elementary school. Here is the proposed plat, six slots, um, all lots over three acres, some six acres. Uh, the property owners are Janet and Brandon Davis. Um, they're represented by Jim McCory. Uh, he is not able to make it, I don't believe, tonight.
I didn't look at it.
Did not receive, I did receive one call of disinformation, um, and staff is recommending approval.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this, uh, requires a public hearing, so I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and if anybody that is attending would like to speak on this item, please raise your electronic hand. All right, seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Ask for questions, comments, or a motion from the commission.
I move to approve PL 2020 00526.
I'll second.
Uh, wait a minute, five, two.
It's preliminary, right, first?
Oh, yeah, sorry, got, sounds good, okay, you're right. My mistake. I got motion in a second. Any further, uh, discussion on that? Okay, go ahead. Uh, Amber, please give a roll call.
Bridget?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazzanby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Wright and Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Right, motion carries. Um. The next one is the same, her, same division, subdivision, Hearn subdivision, but this is the final plat. It's PL 2020, uh, 00527. And Mr. Kip, do you have anything to add from the preliminary?
I did not, just a final plat, uh, request for final plat approval of a six lot conventional subdivision.
Okay, uh, this does not require a public hearing, uh, so can I have a comments or a motion from the commissions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
PL 2020 00527 with all staff comments.
And I have a.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Motion carries. Uh, item number 12, 129 North College Mixed Use, PL 2020 520. And this is a conditional use approval. Mr. Howell?
Yes, good. Okay, so, uh, like you said, this is a conditional use request for commercial entertainment use, specifically a general merchandise store. They're located in 129 North College Street, an urban core underneath the, uh, College Edge Overlay District designation. The, uh, area is, uh, right downtown, just north of Tumors, Tumors Corner. You can see that it's, uh, surrounded by urban core, uh, on all sides. Properties to the north, south and, uh, and the east are also underneath the College Edge Overlay District. This is, um, the central business area for the city. Um, in particular lot. It is approximately 0.94 acres. Future land use plan for, uh, this area designated subject property as urban core. Intended to serve as retail, financial, service, historical and religious points with some high density uses. This is the site plan, the the development extends from, uh, from North College all the way back to the Wright Street. There's, uh, two different elevations, North College being a little bit higher than Wright. The general merchandise stores to be located at the ground story of the North College side. It'd be approximately 19,000 square feet. Behind it will include, um, at the, at the same grade and below will be parking as well as a couple of walk-in residential units. Above it will be additional, uh, parking with residential units above. The residential hu, the residential component is a, uh, is permitted by Wright, the zoning district. This is a, listen, this is a show of, uh, different floor plans for the various floor elevations. This is cutaway. You can see that the retail is located here, fronting on, on North College. with parking immediately behind and above for the residential when the residential above it. Go back to the site plan real quick. You do have pedestrian entrances for the general merchandise store going off of North College Street as well as immediately next to it with a tied in pedestrian path going into the the Wright Street parking deck, which is immediately north of the development. The blue areas you see are access points for residential. This is a conceptual rigoring of the elevation. You have the marketplace of the ground story looking at it from the, from North College side. With that taking in the vast majority of the of the Wright Street franchise, you have an access point for the residential units above. And again, this is a conceptual that we're still working on, you know, obviously they can't go too far without a conditional use. Anything, once it comes, once it comes ready to, for the DRT, it'll also be subject to the DDRC review. Downtown design or downtown developer review committee will give them a, give them additional instruction on the aesthetics of the development. Staff recommends approval. It's, it does conform with what the city is envisioning for this area in town and it conforms to the downtown master plan as well as the comprehensive, comprehensive plan. We received only a little bit of correspondence. I've spoken to neighbors on the east and south already who had questions for running information and that was it, but have not received anything else. Subject to your question.
All right, thank you. This does require a public hearing, so I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing now and if anybody would like to speak on this item, please raise that electronic hand. Okay, seeing no one, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and ask for questions, comments or a motion from the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I approve item with the staff comments.
Can I get a motion? Motion in a second. Any further discussion on that motion? Okay, Amber, can you give us a roll call?
Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazenby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCorr?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Wright and Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Right, motion carries. On to the last item, which is the Dakota. This is PL twenty twenty zero zero five five two and this is an appeal of the denial of an engineering, design and construction main waiver request relating to construction of sidewalks in the neighborhood. This does not require a public hearing. And so I just asked for any discussion or questions, comments. First, how about Mr. Crowdis, can you want to give us a little rundown on what's going on here? What I'm kind of interested in too is, is as you discussed would be you know, kind of the, the basic city philosophy on why do we put, you know, what, what's behind putting sidewalks in in general? I mean, you know, we do that for a, a reason, I suspect. If you can kind of get enlightened us on that too, that would help.
I'll do my best with that one. In, in general, residents desire sidewalks. Obviously, that's not necessarily a universal statement for all residents, but I, I believe when the sidewalk requirements first came in, which, which predates me, it was due to lots and lots of requests coming in for sidewalks and residential developments, so they were getting put in and they were getting used, so it's just a lot more efficient to get those installed when the design and development is going on initially with the subdivision, so. So now we have them. Your, your brief summary really covered the gist of this. I mean, we, they submitted a waiver to not do sidewalk. This development's been under construction for quite a while. The plans reflected the sidewalk that was required, which they've been building off those plans when it came time to do the final plat and begin selling lots. As is typical, you know, the sidewalk wasn't built yet or started and so that portion of the sidewalk was bonded, which was all of it, as well as any other outstanding items, which is typically the wearing surface, so. Sidewalk's been bonded for a while and now that they're getting close to want to complete the bond work and get the infrastructure accepted, they are not wanting to do the sidewalk, which may have been the case the entire time. They just had not formally sought a waiver. But it is bonded and is required. They submitted a waiver request and we denied it. And now it's up for appeal and that's why it's here in front of you.
So what's, the, we're looking at the trail drawing. Now, is that basically homeowner association developed? Or what, what, that's not, you know, there's no sort of sidewalk or anything on that, on the trails, right?
Right, that has nothing, nothing to really do with the city. This is, this is an exhibit that Mr. Murray sent us along with the waiver request. And, and I actually, it wasn't highlighted. I, I did as best I could to determine where the trail was and there were some dashed lines and, and I feel fairly confident that that's what was being represented with those lines. So I highlighted it and it it matches up with what I can see out there for the most part. So yes, that was submitted with him to sort of show, show everybody what, what they've done and, and perhaps plan to continue to work on and expand.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions or comments from the commission?
Yeah, Phil, I just want to say, I'm sorry about, I don't, I don't know why my version of Zoom doesn't have my button on it.
Oh, that's okay. No problem at all.
Well, I took nobody off, I'm sorry.
Okay.
But I would have to say that prior to, as, as Dan said, prior to ninety eight, when we required it, we were having many neighborhoods who wanted sidewalks and the city was having to find grants and other ways to try to build sidewalks that these communities wanted. It may very well be that ten years from now, the people who live in this subdivision wish they had sidewalks and want the city to help them get sidewalks. This way, it's, as being required, they have the sidewalks. I've never heard anyone talk about sidewalks being a detraction or being a nuisance because they allow everybody access. This trail as I see it, it crosses private property. Each lot owner has either dedicated an easement, but it doesn't, it's not the public enforceable to make sure that everybody has access to move throughout the community. Kids going to school buses. If the school bus doesn't go all the way up to Dakota Drive, but stops at Richland Road, the kids who live in that neighborhood will have a sidewalk to walk down to catch the school bus. There's just a lot of reasons for that, the reason that requirement was put in. And I'm just surprised it's gotten this far, being this fully developed and this mature subdivision without them.
Um, Dan, I have, I have a question. While I agree that during DRT, this should have probably come up and I realize it's bonded and that's great. But is there no other provision for a large lot subdivision that has the potential to omit sidewalks? Like this is, the, the whole idea behind a subdivision of this kind is that it is natural, more natural than others. Is there nothing for, for that in, in any manual or anything?
Not, not that I can think of off the top of my head. I, I may need to go back and look at the conservation subdivision regulations and see if there's any mention of alternative versions of sidewalks in there, like trails or something, but if there is, I, I don't, you know, not many of those come through and I don't recall anybody doing some sort of trail and substitution of a sidewalk that was in compliance with our manual or design.
Okay, so my second question is, are they gonna have to come back for what is phase two? And I noticed that they're actually both zoned different. Phase two, are they gonna have to come back for the same thing with that phase?
Well, phase, phase two does not require sidewalks because it's, it's basically a condo development. It's private.
Okay. Okay.
That's interesting.
Yeah. Okay, so I, I think that we heard from, I mean, I promise, I mean, I feel like almost everybody lives there, that they don't want these, while from a city standpoint, I understand that it's been bonded and that's great. I, I do know that we have that sidewalk fund. I'd love to know if that's an option that then like Warren said, ten years down the road, they want sidewalks, great, the money's there, they can have sidewalks. It, at such time.
And my understanding is that they would be willing to pay into the sidewalk fund as an alternative to having the sidewalks installed. I don't know if anybody else has spent time out there, but I, I've driven out there a considerable amount and it is a very rural feeling neighborhood off of Richland, of course, which is, you know, not, but you know, the, the street's a little wider. There's a lot of room to walk off, off the road on the, you know, on the grass, so. And the fact that we, I think we did hear from, I think, I know, I got at least ten emails, so I mean, there's only twelve lots, I think, in this, in this subdivision.
I'll bet I have the other two emails.
You may, but you know, I think if, I, I think if they're willing to possibly put some funds into the sidewalk fund, that might be a good alternative from my perspective.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I haven't been out there myself. I agree with that. I'm really kind of surprised that that other phase two was a condo sort of setup and they don't require sidewalks at all. So, you know, that makes me feel even a little more convinced that it might be okay to not have the sidewalks.
You should drive out there if you've never seen it. It is lovely.
Any more comments, questions or motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I I may go back a little bit further with public right of ways and the engineer and maybe not Mr. McCord, but years ago, the city put these sidewalks in from a safety standpoint for the benefit of the welfare of the people and the general public. Because without them, children and others and pedestrians and bicyclists have no place else to go but to the road and these are beautiful lots and the backs of them are certainly natural. I'm getting to get a little concerned about these trails in the back and their safety, especially after dark in some of these areas as travel waves. And I think the city has a responsibility to provide access to the general public to, for sidewalks to other areas and people that own these lots gave up all of their rights within the right of way. And the area within the right of way becomes the city's responsibility. And we have mandated that there be pedestrian ways, i.e. sidewalks, for the safety of the general public and even though it is nice and large lots out there, I think when you leave that large lot in the back to get to the street, you're, you're now beginning to get into the mu- municipal urban environment. And that environment mandates sidewalks and I think we ought to, to just to enforce, not enforce, but to back the city's requirements that, that we've adopted. And the other thing, you're putting money into a fund now and ten years from now, it's not gonna talk, you know, it's not gonna touch the cost of it. It's just a, a, a bad investment and I think now's the time to do it. They've been approved. And just welcome to city life. Thank you.
Are we prepared for a motion? Chairman?
Sure. Go right ahead.
I would like to move to approve their waiver of sidewalks. I don't know how to say it because there's an appeal, but denial for a waiver. So I would like to allow them to put the money into the fund for the city.
In lieu of the sidewalk, no sidewalk.
At this time.
Do you like to make a motion to approve the appeal with the caveat that the whatever that dollar amount would have been to install sidewalk, that that dollar amount be remitted to the city for sidewalk that may be placed elsewhere?
Go ahead, try and say that.
Yes, but so you're, what you're following up with is that that sidewalk money may or may not be specific to this area?
Yes, correct. It's, it's, it's intended to go into a, a citywide fund to be used for other areas where perhaps there are some missing segments or this, there may be a more pressing need for a sidewalk in an alternate location.
But it does leave open for the future that they could petition the city for sidewalks in ten years if they really decide to do that. And they just get put in the, the sidewalk installation priorities, you know, scheme and, you know, they'll get to them when they can.
That, that's exactly right. The sidewalk fund gives the city an opportunity to put those, put additional monies beyond what we budgeted for. To, we have sidewalk prioritization, so it would just go to, it would go, it would fall into that mix and be used for most likely another more pressing development or, or sidewalk connection.
Not yet, is that your motion? Are you reconsidering? Yes, that is still what I would like to do. I would like to approve the waiver with the caveat that that current bonded sidewalk that the money's been set aside for go into the city fund. I will second that motion.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, Amber, can you give us a roll call on this?
Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazenby?
No.
Marshall?
No.
McCorr?
No.
Reed?
Yes.
Wright and Ball?
No.
Birmingham?
No.
What's, what do we have there, Amber?
Uh, motion is denied. The vote is four to five.
Okay. Sidewalks there will be. Okay, it brings us to the end of the, the meeting. I don't have anything, I don't have anything further. How about you, Mr. Cotton?
I just needed a clarification from Amber. Are you saying that the, the motion to approve the appeal failed?
That is correct.
Right.
Okay.
Five, five against and four, four.
Okay.
Does that, does that mean technically we need a new motion?
No.
There's no reason for that. We voted it's.
Yes. Subdivision, if we get that close, I mean, then we start, you know, we have to have a certain vote on the subdivision piece, but that not here. Okay. That wraps us up. Do you have anything further there, Mr. Cotton?
I couldn't remember if I mentioned this during Monday's packet meeting or not, but we think we'll probably have our last work session with the downtown design review committee on Tuesday afternoon related to the revised development and design standards we're working for on, for the downtown area. Assuming that comes to pass, you may be hearing from me as early as late next week because we'd like to get a joint session together with the commission and the DDRC so that they can formally pass that work product off to you for your review and we'll begin to work with you on that.
Good, sounds good.
Other than that, that's all I've got.
Okay, well, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for your time and attention and we will see you next time around.
Very good, thank you.
It's very good to see everybody. I can't wait to get out.
Yeah, me too.
Agreed.